And then. I will start recording. If I can, actually.
Okay, looks like we are good to go. Thank you, Erica. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. This is the first time that I'm seeing everyone in the new year, so certainly hope that all of you had a good holiday season. With your families and got some downtime. We certainly all hit the ground running in 2022 if we ever even really stopped in 2021. Just, I want to thank everybody. I know this is our first meeting of the year and it's our first meeting as a full task force in a few weeks. Want to thank everyone. I know there's been a lot of subcommittee work going on. So certainly thank you to everyone for all the work that you've continued to do in the smaller subcommittee groups. And tonight, for those who are watching us online, we will be having some discussion about some of the preliminary recommendations. And this is ahead of our second public listing session, which we have scheduled for 6:00 PM next Wednesday, January 19th. The registration for that has been out now for a little over a week. We've been pushing that out through all of the county executives, social media platforms, which you can find at CEX Also Brooks. And we have also been pushing it out through our newsletter and we'll continue to do that for all of our task force members. I know all of you have that invitation as well, and I hope that you'll continue to push it out and remind people. Our signup numbers were pretty low as of yesterday. I believe we only had a few people while we had multiple people sign up and register. We only had a few people who said they actually wanted to present their comments live. So certainly hope that this evening's discussion will get people to continue to tune in and take a look at everything that's going on and comment on some of the early preliminary thoughts on recommendations. But please, the county executive's office will continue to share the registration link and we ask that you all continue to do the same. So hopefully we can increase our numbers ahead of next Wednesday night. So with that, I will turn things over to our chair and let him take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Urson. Greetings, everyone, and Happy New Year to everyone as well. We are, for our introduction, we will provide just some preliminary recommendations and they are only preliminary. We are looking at these recommendations or potential recommendations, and right now they're only potential. And as, while we will report out some potential preliminary recommendations, they are up for adjustments, revision, or refinement, as well as everything else that is on the chopping block or discussion block. So what we'll do is how I propose to run is we will, we will ask each subcommittee chair to report out. I think we reasonably have time to exhaust questions from the committee, from the task force, for each report out, and then we'll just go from one to the next. And it looks like the order could possibly be the composition group, then roles and responsibilities, and then compensation in terms. Before we begin, are there any questions, any recommendations for the good of the group? All right, my friends, so barring any questions, if you can queue up composition group to get ready, set, and provide us your preliminary potential recommendations.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I believe that's my group, board compensation, term, terms, and professional development. I would like to thank everyone for their generous information that we have received to come up with these preliminary recommendations. And these preliminary recommendations are at high level, not specifically with details, but moving forward, we would like to provide some details with these recommendations. I would also like to thank the members of my subcommittee who were diligent and kept me on task and kept me thinking about so many different things. So thank you so much. And finally, I'd like to thank Erica for her leadership in providing the opportunity to have further discussion aside so that we could brainstorm and think about these recommendations. Our first recommendation, excuse me, deals with the compensation. School board members' compensation shall be increased to $27,000 and adjusted every four years by the calculation's regional cost of living adjustment, known as COLA. School board chair compensation shall be increased to $32,000 and adjusted accordingly. Recommendation two, and I'll say all the recommendations, and then Sean, if that's okay, we'll leave an opportunity for questions and answers at the end.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Number two, board members should be limited by two terms, two-term board members. And we went back and forth on this, and we do have some information regarding consecutive and consecutive terms and those who do not want to do a consecutive term. But right now, we are at a limit of two terms to provide fresh opportunities and fresh ideas every two years. Number three, board members shall avail themselves on all professional development opportunities, including conferences sponsored by the National Boards Association, the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, and the Council of Urban Boards of Education. In addition, board members should report their professional development activities publicly. To hold a level of accountability, we would like to propose that all the professional conferences and Dean training be available to the public and be reported out to the public. And last, the board member shall conduct a board self-evaluation and publicly report its findings and strategies to address opportunities for improvement. Part of the assessment and part of the accountability that was discussed extensively in our subcommittee was this issue of accountability and how to hold people accountable while doing the great job that they are doing. So that concludes our four recommendations, and I am happy to hear and welcome comments and questions. And if I forgot anything, board members, committee board, committee members, please chime in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any que-- oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Erica.
Dr. Cole, I just wanted to, before you take questions, because I do want to add a point of clarification. And thank you, Dr. Smith, for that presentation of the recommendations for the subcommittee. One of the things I wanted to make clear, because some people may have raised their eyebrows from that. The term limitations is two terms, but we're still talking about four-year terms. I believe Ms. Smith said two years. We're not changing the number of years that a board member can serve. It will still be four years, but it will be two terms of four years each. So I think she may have said two years, and I just wanted to make sure and make clear that we weren't changing the number of years that are applicable to a term. So that.
Thank you, Erica, for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. PK. Do you have a question or comment statement?
Yes, no, thank you so much for sharing those recommendations for your committee. I have two questions, just clarification. I think I heard two different salary numbers when you suggested. Could you repeat those again? And then my, I guess my follow-up question is to what Erica just clarified as well. I don't know if your subcommittee discussed, like, if these were lifetime limits where folks could be off, roll off for a while, and then, you know, run again for school board as like just a limit on two consecutive. So just curious on what the subcommittee thought on that.
Wonderful. I can address the first one for clarity. Board members' compensation shall be increased to $27,000. That would be board member. And the chair compensation increased to $32,000 with the stipulation of the adjustment every four years due to COLA. The second one, very good question. We are still discussing this one. We're going back and forth within our committee. And we, we thought about the consecutive, but we also thought about giving people the opportunity that if they didn't want to do consecutive, because maybe somebody wanted to pivot and do something else, that they could have that opportunity to do so. So instead of doing an eight, you could do two terms, eight years. At that time, done, go do something else, and you could come back and do something else. But again, that's still in discussion. Welcome opportunities for that discussion.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Wallace.
Yes, I just have a comment. Again, I'm part of that committee, and I agree with all the recommendations. I just have a comment on the salary increase. If you do the arithmetic, that's like a 42% increase, whereas, you know, industry-wide, people are getting five and eight percent. So whereas I agree with, whenever we present it, I'd like to add the fact that this is the first raise in eight years or nine years or whatever. It just kind of makes a number like 42% a little more palatable if you realize, hey, guys, we haven't done this in 10, 15 years.
And I think it's safe to say, Dr. Wallace, as well, is that, you know, this was based on also looking at similar situated school districts and really trying to align as much as possible, even though we know that in some cases, some school districts have chosen not to kind of go to that level. But I think looking at similar number of student, the student number, as far as student numbers enrolled in the demographics of the system itself, we did look at a wide variety of the various school districts and kind of tried to align our school district with those in similar situations. So they may not necessarily be regional ones, like, you know, here in the state, but also, for example, looking at Charlotte Mecklenburg and things of that sort. So.
Thank you. That was my very next question. So thank you. Any other questions, comments, editorials? I have a question around the self-evaluation, maybe otherwise known as a self-study, if you will. What's to be done with it after it's complete? Is there any conversation around that? Is that even in our realm of conversation? Is it in our purview?
I can go ahead and answer that. The self-evaluation was talked about. And then I think the key part of that is to make it public, another like public report so that, again, the issue of accountability, we really talked about the issue of accountability a lot. And so getting, you know, having the board members evaluate themselves on either professional development or some type of process that they're doing and really speaking to the public about it and making things a bit more transparent. That was the key there. It wasn't more like a self-study. It was more like, let me see what I'm doing as a board member, and here it is to the public. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure, thank you.
With the, again, the idea to increase opportunities and improvement for themselves. Dr. Wallace and Ms. Sue, did you want to add anything else to self-evaluation?
No, I can only just underscore the idea of the accountability. And for the, for the money, if we do a quick thing, that turns out if somebody works for 40 hours a week, it's about $17 an hour if they're truly working at that suggested increase in salary. As we were trying to look at being fair.
Thank you. Any additional questions? You know, like everyone else, I so appreciate that, you know, the work, the effort, the thinking, making sure that it's aligned to what we're considering to be best practices, you know, regionally and across the country, and what's good for Prince George's County Public Schools as well. So thank you. This is not a forever, speak now, forever, hold your peace. If you have additional questions later, you know, that are brewing, then fine. But for now, we can move forward with roles and responsibilities.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you to the committee members for this group. And Mr. Young is going to share his screen so that we could go over those, and you can, I'm more of a visual person, so I just wanted to put him on the screen so we can go from that way. And our committee, our recommendations are also incomplete. I would say that we have, we did get a new one that's kind of revised. So I'll go over that as window to that.
Ms. Virginia is frozen.
Okay, while he's doing it. I apologize. I do have to give Mr. Young privileges to do that. Let me just give him that those privileges. I apologize for that.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Young, you should be able to share your screen at this moment.
Okay, thank you. So we had, just to go over the areas that we were held accountable for. So the first charge was to define and clarify the duties and powers of the county school board, define or clarify the voting authority of the student board member. And the third was to assess the current accountability standards and oversight mechanism. So that's the one that, when we get to that, I'll talk to you more about it. But essentially, we looked at the draft, the current law as it stands, and then the draft recommendations for duties and powers is to redefine the purpose of the county board of education as it's outlined in the code. And the language change there, actually, Mr. Chairman is also was part of our committee, was to ensure the highest level of academic achievement and engagement. And the previous language really talked about raise the level. So the thought there was to, you know, put it more in a positive light and to be more positive in terms of the language that we use, because words do matter, and that also reflects on how we view and see the county and the work that has to be done with the board of education. And so the committee's opinion was to, was that the purpose of the board should be to use best management practices to look at standards for academic achievement for county, for our students in Prince George's County, and elevate those to the highest possible way we can, and ensuring that the decisions of the board are aligned with the goal of providing students in Prince George's County education of the highest quality. So it's really more, this is more, I guess, if you had to look at the changes, it's more in the spirit of the language and the tone of the language to make that change. As we move ahead in terms of redefining the power limits of the board, there was a lot of discussion about the fact that we have, that the law in general talks about what the role of the board is and the role of the superintendent. But essentially, current law prohibits the county board from implementing certain policies that will contradict day-to-day. And it was specific to certain fiscal matters of the school system. And so it's the opinion of the subcommittee that these terms are overly broad and provide for undue opportunity for contention. So the idea here is how do we create language and ensure that the atmosphere for the language that we use again, words matter, is designed to be cohesive and to provide collaborative opportunities for the board and superintendent or CEO in their, in their, in their operations together. And so essentially, the current clause is that the board may not implement a policy or take action that contradicts day-to-day. But that's always been the law, and that's always been sort of across the board, and oversight of fiscal matters. And so what we're talking about is that the main things in terms of best practices that boards do is to, in some cases, hire the CEO or superintendent. But those other two main functions is to approve a budget and to develop and create policy. So the recommendation is that the county board may not implement a policy or take any action that contradicts the actions or interferes with the chief executive officer's ability to perform their powers and duties is what's imposed under the code right now for what the job is of a superintendent. So it's essentially that the county will not implement a policy that's contradictory to the current law in terms of the role of the CEO or superintendent in the county. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions related to that. The other piece was to redefine the general duties of the county board. And in this case, we simply changed the language from equal to equitable, and that was designed to to look at how we essentially function and what are the goals of the county in terms of how we look at the needs of students. So needs-based as opposed to everyone gets the same. And so if we talk about that from a place of equity, then that means that we're looking at, you know, ensuring that level of academic achievement and the highest level based on student needs. And I think when we looked at redefining the power of the county board in terms of the advisory committees, our main goal there was to ensure that the representation of advisory committees is representative of the county. So it's essentially looking at both demographic and geographic diversity so that when a committee is established by the board, for whatever reason, they could be ad hoc or they could be longstanding, that those committees would be diverse in demographic and geography. And then we had the task of, so you can see here that there was a number of areas in the code that provides for opportunity to have discussion. And this one was about removal authority. And so essentially, across the state, in any district, a board member can be removed for immorality, misconduct in office, incompetency, or willful neglect of duty. The difference for Prince George's County was that instead of just sending that to the state board of education for their investigation and recommendation or decision, it also included the governor. And so it was the opinion of the subcommittee that this process aligned with all other counties and the city of Baltimore and not requiring the governor to be actively involved in the process, but that the state board of education would be the governing body over that. And then the next one involves a student board member, and this one was also a lot of discussion in terms of, and I want to just distinguish between the student voting rights, which is essentially what our charge was. And that was to, the committee looked at the current voting rights of the student member and recommended that, or the proposed recommendation is to maintain those current standards to protect student board member from undue political entanglement and from defined sensitive items. So the voting issue is one thing, and then, of course, there's, we talked about having clear definitions about the student member and their participation in executive session where the student is also subjected to a lot of topics that boards have to vote on that are covered under the law to be held in an executive session and are not public items. And the last one was the accountability and oversight. And so the discussion that we need to have around this, and this gets specifically to things around the ethics panel, how they're selected, and what are the mechanisms or avenues that we can put in place to ensure that the oversight and accountability piece, which sounds like we are in lockstep with the first group, Dr. Smith. So there's a lot of discussion that needs to occur around that, and we're still working on this one. Happy to answer any questions. I know that was a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. You know, I'm going to lean heavily on my task force colleagues, because usually I have, you know, some questions ready on the ready. But since I was on the subcommittee, I'm going to need you guys to really ask all these questions. Hi, Ms. Rivera.
Hi there. Gina, thank you for that. I have a couple of questions, and some of it is related to the school board member. And because you've been there, you understand how this works. I'm very concerned if a school board member, and maybe I just don't know enough about their role, but when they participate in an executive session, would that mean that they're privy to some possibly pretty sensational information? And, you know, do they get involved with the decisions about actions that need to be taken about another student? That really is worrisome to me. Could you just elaborate a little on that, please?
So the, the way the law currently reads that the student member can be invited into executive session, and correct me, Mr. Young, if I have the amount wrong, but it says by a majority vote, affirmative vote of the board. So essentially, to answer your question, yes, I mean, the, you know, the law specifically allows for certain things to be discussed in executive session that are not discussed in public for reasons around personnel. And sometimes those personnel matters involve criminal activity. It involves student appeals. And in terms of my experience, which, you know, ended in 2016, student members who sat in executive session, yes, they might speak, they might speak to the issues. They may add something to a part of a discussion. They don't vote on it. But yes, to answer your question, they are privy to some really sensitive matters if they're in executive session.
Is that, to piggyback a little bit more or add a little bit more, in your experience around the United States and other situations, do the school board, the student members, do they participate in these sessions?
Well, up until about the last five years, I would say, it was, it was, boards have increasingly allowed, and which is a good thing, to have a student member on the board. It is unusual to have student members in executive session nationally.
Is that something that's still part of your ongoing discussion, whether they should be allowed in those, on those circumstances?
Yes, I think one part of that, I think what we recommended was to keep the voting rights the same. And we do need a little bit more, we do need to have, we did recommend or think that there needs to be more discussion, to your point, about their permission or participation in executive session. And I think this is an area, I think, where, you know, because superintendents have day-to-day and they're sort of the responsible person for the student more than the board is in board participation, you know, superintendents often have opinions about those things as well, because they tend to bring in sensitive issues to the board for discussion.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I have one other question, different. There's mention of an advisory committee, a publicly-composed advisory committee to the board. What is, what is that role, and how would it be different from what the board is doing?
So if I were to give you an example, the one that stands out most to me was the board created or established a disabilities advisory board committee that we had for, I'm not sure if it still exists, but it was designed to review within the school district complaints and issues around people with differing abilities and how we were addressing those issues. So it was a really active committee, and it involved staff as well as members of the community. So that's an example of an advisory board. So an issue, it was designed so that, let's say, there's an ongoing issue that just keeps coming up in the county, and the board can create a committee to kind of help them address, you know, by bringing the community into it and help them address how to best handle it as a, from a policy or governance perspective. So it's not a specific committee. It is the authority to create them as you need to.
Oh, okay, so it's not an ongoing kind of thing that it, they can be created based on a need?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rivera, do you have any more questions or comments at this time? Hi, Mr. Harrington. You're on mute, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Regina, thank you for a good report. That's a very good report. I had, I have one question. In fact, it even came up in the subcommittee that I chair, but it wasn't purviewed to. um, but wasn't purviewed to, um, you know, our charge. And that is, and, and maybe you can speak to what is, is commonplace around the country, uh, where a board, uh, has hiring responsibility of what I would call line staff, not necessarily executive staff or even high, your management staff, but line, line staff, um, and have hiring and firing authority. And I raised this because, you know, um, so, uh, on corporate or, you know, even nonprofit boards, you know, it's, it's the president, CEO, and the board has authority over that president, CEO, the hire them or fire them or do, you know, pay raises or what have you, but certainly does not have any authority to hire, uh, staff, uh, below the CEO. So, um, I notice our board does have that authority, um, to hire what I would call line staff. Is that typical of what you've seen around the country?
So I think there's a distinction there. Um, it's not typical that boards are hiring the line staff. What is typical, and it depends on how the statute works in a particular state, but essentially, and I was explaining this, I think, in our subcommittee as well, is that they're not hiring. The superintendent has the full authority to hire the staff. But we had a time when, um, we were required by law to have certificated employees. Um, it, so that was when we had that sort of high quality conversation that was going on with No Child Left Behind. So what was happening is you had to ensure that you had a certain, that you have, you had, um, qualified and certificated employees in certain subjects to be taught. And so when the superintendent brought it to the board, they were bringing it to say, or CEO were saying, th- this is the number of staff that we have who meet these requirements. And it essentially, I hate to use these terms, but essentially the board was, um, confirming or rubber stamping, if you will, that this was the process. But to your point, um, for, to clarify, boards do not hire below the CEO. Um, they do have that confirmation authority and that's not so unusual. Um, and some of that also comes from, um, some of that comes from, um, the, the role of superintendent to bring things to the board so that it's shown to be aligned with policy. But it should be clear that they do not hire.
Is your committee looking at that issue at all? Cause I know there was some fuzziness around, like even board staff or, or hiring, um, line staff and what have you. And I was wondering if your committee's taking that on as an issue?
We only discussed in that, in that, in the component that you just described it as, are they actually hiring teachers? Um, there's one other piece that I think is important is that the law, the current state board, if, if I'm not mistaken, um, I haven't looked at it in a while, but they do require, so for example, if a teacher is not going to be renewed for a particular year, the superintendent brings a whole list of non-renewals, the board has to approve that because they also have, these employees have, um, appeal rights to the board. So, um, uh, to answer your question, we did not delve deeper into that, but it sounds like if, you know, there's something that we feel like, um, if you think as a group, we should take a deeper look at that to ensure that it's clear that the board is not hiring these employees, that should, that, uh, that's probably easy to do.
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, I, I don't want to step out of bounds here. Um, you know, uh, I, 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 I know as a member, I, I'd be curious at that. Um, obviously there was a lot of, um, co- uh, conversation and, um, attention around that issue on the current board around hiring and firing staff. Now that might, I might be commingling, uh, board staff, if you will, um, with the CEO's staff. And I think there needs to be some clarity around that as well. But, um, I, you know, I certainly w- we welcome some, some insight on that, but, you know, not, not in a position, so they've even request that the committee look at that.
Yep. And Mr. Harrington, I'll, I'll pop in here just really quickly on that point. And so currently, I mean, there's kind of three buckets that we're looking at in terms of staffing. You have the board staff, which is one piece, uh, one component that, you know, the board is managing and handling. And then you have, you know, your teachers, um, you know, day-to-day staff, principals, other certified and uncertified personnel. And then you would have kind of like executive staff that is under the CEO. And so the CEO does have, uh, in current code autonomy to, you know, hire and fire and manage the staff under the CEO's, you know, jurisdiction, like the executive staff. And then the CEO will then send recommendations. It's actually codified, these recommendations have to be in writing to the board for their approval. And so the board will then approve all those certified, uh, principals, teacher, those roles. Um, and so those are already in code. And so there's, I would think about it in those three buckets in terms of, uh, the CEO staff. That's already 100% uh, controlled by the CEO. Um, and then where the board really comes in is managing, whether it's their staff, they have control over their staff. And then also, um, you know, looking at those certified principals, teachers. And those are still at the recommendation of, uh, the CEO.
Okay. No, thank you for that. Thank you for that. Um, okay. I, I, I want to think about some more because I think there's a question about the board having its own staff. And then of those, and, and we have to get into that now, just put this as a, a, on a bucket list. But, you know, I would imagine those staff would have to conform to code, if you want, in terms of hiring practices and what have you, and go through those kinds of rigors. Um, it, there's, there's not just total discretion of, of the board to hire and fire, you know, at, at, at their discretion, but there, there, there's got to be some, uh, code which, which, you know, they have to, that, that they're, the hiring and firing practices have to fall within. Um, and so I think, I, I think that, I think that deserves some clarification, if you will. Um, um, uh, if not, if not some, some modification. But I don't know where that would fall. So, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Sure. Mr. Harrington, thank you for the, for the questions, plural. And, uh, a, a space for us to consider this topic area. I think that, um, with consideration, we'll go back and see to what extent does the task force put this under its purview? And then go from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions on roles and responsibilities?
No questions, but a, but a comment. Um, and, um, thank you so much for, for the presentation and for the visual. Um, it really is helpful, uh, when, when trying to craft some, some new language here. The, um, in our committee, we talked about, um, not, we talked about an advisory board, not particularly in this situation, this situation, the advisory committee is, um, one that specializes in a subject. I really understood that example that you gave in terms of, um, the disability, Virginia. Um, the, we talked more along, uh, in terms of an advisory council and a nomination committee. Um, and I'm, I believe that's going to go under the general, um, bucket. If, if we, I think that's the last bucket, I think. But I, I just wanted to bring that up because sometimes when we use, uh, the, the titles to things, they, the, and they're, they're so similar that, that sometimes they can get a little, a little, uh, you know, unclear. So we did talk about a nomination committee as well as a committee that, that would, would kind of serve, uh, and, and I'm just using my own words, not the committee's words, but, but serve as a, um, uh, a way to filter candidate, uh, individuals that want to be on the board and, um, have the credentials and the background and the degrees that need to, to, to be vetted, like a vetting group. Um, and that's where that came in. And the other one was an advisory council, uh, which, you know, a, a council that, that, that is made up of different individuals in the county that could advise, uh, on different matters. But I, I'm just gonna say that and, and maybe we can put that on, on the bucket list or under the general recommendation.
And, and, yeah, I'm sorry. And just to, to add to that, so, and to make it, um, you know, to add a little bit more clarification. So the, the nominating council or commission that, um, Dr. Smith was talking about is something similar that you see in, in Arundel County. It may be something that goes along with, um, it may fall more into Mr. Harrington's, um, subcommittee as far as kind of how, uh, school board members are selected or elected. Um, because it is that particular, um, commission in Arundel County does exactly what she explained, which was kind of almost vets, applications or resumes for people who are interested in being school board members. And this kind of came into our conversation when even when we were talking about terms, um, and looking at the quality of school board members. So that, that's one. Um, the advisory council, um, in, 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 I don't know, Ms. Jacobs, if you remember this, I mean, this is actually still in board policy. It's there, um, a lot of times it has not been, um, put into place. Um, as she mentioned, we had the disabilities issues advisory board, and then we also even had a parent advisory board. Um, and so the, the current law, I mean, the current board policy gives that, um, authority. But, you know, had, the board does not always exercise it. So I think the advisory council was supposed to be kind of a, another leg or another arm of accountability that kind of came up in our discussions as well.
I think the only, only commentary I would add to that is, or to, or, um, add to the conversation is that, a- and I do remember, I think part of, a lot has come out over the last several years, but I think what we do have to caution is to not create too many layers that confuses who's responsible for what, um, and who's accountable for what. And I'm not saying that shouldn't happen. I'm just saying that it should be very narrowly defined, what the advisory, what it looks like and what it, what it actually means, which is probably one of the reasons, um, you don't see it because you don't want, you also don't want to have so many layers of accountability that the CEO is like, who am I actually, you know, who am I responding to? Or, um, or if that advisory, or, or what is the, um, I guess, what is the, um, what is the full authority of the advisory committee? I know it says advisory, um, but oftentimes when we create those, um, the expectation is that you're going to also take what they say. Um, and there's nothing wrong with that as long as it's clearly defined. That, that's just why. Two cents.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, Ms. Wilson. Any additional questions, comments? Okay. Barring none, I'd like to transition to composition, composition, excuse me, leadership and structure.
Chairman, thank you very much. Um, I don't know if we, we have a chart and I don't know if I can share a screen now. Um, and put the chart on the screen. Is that possible?
Um, yes, just give me a moment, Mr. Harrington. I'll give you, um, screen sharing capabilities.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Uh, while, while you're doing that, I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, the members of the committee. And if I fail to raise someone, please, um, you know, blame it on my, my heart, not my head or vice versa. However, that goes.
Okay, you now have the ability to share.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Doris Reed, uh, for, for, and the members of the com- the other members of the committee, Dr. Linda Thomas, Dr. Donna Christie, Courtney Green, and Ryan Middleton, uh, for being on the committee. And I'd like to also thank, uh, Patrick Gallagher, excuse me, for his support of, uh, of, of the work. And so appreciate them. Yeah. And at the conclusion of my remarks, I certainly invite them, uh, to, uh, uh, augment anything I, I said or, um, add to anything I've said for the benefit of the full, uh, task force. Um, here it is. Okay. Does everyone see my screen? Okay. So we sort of just used a template and our responsibility, as I saw it, was looking at board composition, leadership, and structure recommendations. Uh, as the chair aptly said, um, I will tell you where we are now. And certainly, uh, based on discussions we have today, where we convene and consider those discussions. Uh, and so that then we could reach even more formal recommendations. But the first, the first summary description, but recommendation was provide an overall statement outlining the recommendation, uh, and include high-level gains and objectives. Um, and so what we put in is, 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 and we went right to the chase, to be honest with you. We said that the board should change from its current hybrid structure, uh, both elected and appointed members to one consisting of elected members. And this could be achieved by certainly removing the four appointed members of the board. So you, so we would have, um, a current structure where there would be nine elected members of the board and they, they would be elected from single-member districts, right? So you'd have single-member district, um, um, board. The other recommendation, um, is that, uh, the, the current board is, uh, the board is currently at nine members, so four appointed members and student members. Um, three of the appointed members are selected by the county and the rationale for this, do you, I, I think you know this already, the selected by the county executive or one by the county council. And so again, we would, we would move to an all, all elected, all elected board. Um, let's see. Um, obviously this would have to then be approved by the general assembly. Um, and I think there was a lot of discussion that we, we took into place and took into consideration around then, how do we, that may try to ensure with the elected board, how do we make sure that we really get our qualifications, right? And the strongest qualifications so that the, the electorate is, is, is electing a, um, uh, a, a board which understands that they are a board, that, that to the best extent try to, uh, make sure that, uh, the, the character and, and the, and, and the composition of the board reflect than that of, of, uh, having the ethos of a board. Um, and so it wa- it was recommend, uh, recommended that, you know, we partner with local groups like the NAACP, um, perhaps a, you know, Chamber of Commerce, other business groups, uh, to get out, you know, to have a community-wide discussion on the kind of qualifications that we would like to see, uh, with, uh, board members and the kind of people that we'd like to see on the board. And, uh, you know, you know, you know, the legislation. So if this would take, obviously, state legislation to, um, override in HB 11107, uh, the hybrid structure, uh, and then, uh, I have new, uh, legislation that would hopefully go and do this elective electoral cycle where we would go to a full elected board. We did have, uh, though I don't see it here, we did have some discussion on the chair. Um, and that the chair, uh, I, I think, no, that the majority of the committee, um, believes that, uh, the chair should be elected. Um, be elected from the, the elected board itself. Um, and not, not that large elected. There is a minority opinion around that, but I'll, I'll just go with the majority opinion at this point that, uh, the chair would be elected and that the new law codified then the role of the chair. So what, what is the role of the chair and the vice chair? Um, and that, that be codifying the law rather than, uh, just kind of, rather this, uh, rely on, on practice and discretion. So in short, um, our recommendation at this point, and, you know, we have some more discussion to go, but our recommendation would be that we go to a full elected school board, that we changed, we changed HB 1107, uh, to that new legislation that would take into account elected board, that the chair be elected among the elected body, uh, and that the, the new law would codify all the role and task of, of the chairs, they assume, and then that, that, uh, chairpersonship. Uh, so that's where we are right now, but I call on other members of the committee. Uh, if I failed to mention that anything around discussion, I would call on them right now to see if there's other things that should be brought up to the attention of the task force.
I'm giving that wait time, yeah, to see if anyone else. I'm giving that wait time, yeah, to see if anyone else.
So, Mr. Chairman, that, that, um, that, that concludes my report, uh, the, the, this subcommittee report at this point, some of the entertaining questions.
Uh, this is Patrick Gallagher. We do have their, our, like, um, for the spreadsheet, David, there are like the additional recommendations.
Oh, do you have that? Do you have that up?
Well, you just see like on this, this recommendation one, so like the, your mouse.
Oh, 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 keep on going.
Yes. It's like that's where we get into the, because recommendation four is the one that gets it to the, um, chair and vice chair issue. So just.
Um, oh, oh, I see. Do I push it down here?
Yes, yes.
There it is. Okay, I was, thanks, Patrick. I was wondering. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of understudied. Um, so we go to single member districts. Um, so I talk about, we talk about here about the, uh, the chair. We, um, and so there would be, there wouldn't be any at-large districts. We go to single member districts. Then let me see if I have this. I think that's it. Those two recommendations. Am I correct, Patrick?
Well, the third recommendation, that's just striving to be diverse, though we don't really, that wasn't really a mechanism we decided on. So it's just kind of a, you know, general statement of support. The fourth recommendation is the chair and vice chair. Right. That just firmly stating that's like you mentioned a few minutes ago.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions from, uh, the committee, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Harrington. I would, uh, while we wait or provide some wait time, um, is there, can anyone from the committee, subcommittee provide a sense of what sources were used or what ration, you know, from where, from what or where rationale to, to get to some of your recommendations? For example, the composition or structure?
I could speak to that, but maybe, uh, uh, someone with greater history like, uh, Doris or Dr. Christie could speak to that as well. Um, you, you know, again, we, we've gone and even Virginia can speak to this as, uh, someone who's had experience of this as well. Um, I, I would say, uh, Mr. Chairman, that we went to, you know, we looked at the history of the school board composition and, um, how, how bodies were chosen, you know, from going from elected that having some controversy at one time, then going to, uh, the body to have a full, um, appointed school board by the county executive with the caveat, then there would be some hybrid. Um, and now just examining, you know, the evolution of that to getting to now returning back to an elected school board. There, there has been community discussions around that. Um, and I think that what we, what we looked at is we examined the community discussions over then the evolution of that and, um, uh, came down to the point of then, uh, coming to the elected school board. But I, I would turn to others if they want to comment, um, not to call out names, but perhaps, uh, uh, Doris Reed and others who've, um, uh, and I've had some, obviously some experience being a former elected official and all this. Um, but that's, that's my take on it, but others might have some other take on it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your, your response in, in so many ways. And one of them in particular is that it's, it's part of what got you there is the voice of the community.
That's right.
Right.
So that's, that's, that, that, that's very, and, and, uh, to be very candid, you know, these are going to be intense. I think this is going to be one of the most intense recommendations that, that is going to demand a lot of, um, of what I would call political dialogue. And, um, and so trying to sort of fathom what that, that political dialogue might look like, particularly in, in the scope of where we are, you know, at, at, at this point. And to what extent then, um, to what extent then we're able to, uh, uh, design some rationale around than, you know, keeping things in places where they are or to go to, uh, either all appointed or all elected school board. The other thing I would say, and I see Doris Reed's hand up, so I, I, you know, Doris, let me make this one comment, but you know, any one of us, please push back, um, welcome that. The other, the other comment that I would say a- as part of the task of the overall task force is how do we get public buy-in? Right? I mean, how do we make sure that the public is, 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 is fully engaged or that there is, there's at least, um, the, the, um, at least there is the invitation for the public to be fully engaged in these, in these weighty, uh, educational issues. And I think it's, it's, it's certainly tough. Um, even, even if you look at efficiencies or what have you, it's tough to say to the public to be totally engaged when they, they in fact then would not have, uh, they would have little or no say-so in, in who would represent them on the school. So that's, that's certainly part of that.
Yeah, thank you. We have an order of hands. Dr. Wallace, Ms. Reed, Dr. Smith.
I, I, I just had a quick question. Again, I personally agree with the idea of an elected school board. But my, my, my understanding, again, as an outsider coming in, that part of the reason we went to the appointed and then the hybrid was the elected people coming forward didn't bring certain skill sets and you needed skill sets that may or may not have been represented by us people. And so the question is, if we go back to an all-elected, which I agree with, is there an expectation we're going to get a different kind of persons coming forward this time than we had before?
I don't mind, I don't mind answering that. I, I, I think I would go back to, um, Dr. Thornton's wise conversation around and presentation on that. And that is that us as, as the community that clearly is engaged and enlightened around this. It is our responsibility to make sure that we are convening, having, having convenings around and the kind of of qualifications that we want to see on the school board, right? Um, and, and I think that's, I think that's the right approach. So you, you heard in my, in my presentation. Um, you know, the NAACP, you know, other, other chambers of commerce, uh, civic associations and what have you that we would, we would create sort of leadership cohorts that would speak to then the kind of qualifications that we want. And, and we hope then that that would guide, um, that, that would guide, uh, the, the elections, the way of bringing forth qualified people uh, to the school board. Does that necessarily guarantee it? Obviously not, but then no election does. But, but certainly we could guide that in a way where, uh, hopefully then the kind of candidates that we would, we would, uh, would, would emerge would be the kind of people that, that would take seriously the task of being on the school board.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace, Mr. Mr. Harrington. Hi, Ms. Reed.
Hello, how are you?
Wonderful, thank you.
Good, good, good. Um, yeah, I wanted to just share a couple of things. Um, we actually had a lengthy discussion about qualifications for board members. Um, we even, you know, asked, is it, was it possible to, um, put qualifications in the law? Um, and we've got the information back, of course, from legal that, no, you can't do that. Uh, so what David had mentioned earlier was we were looking at at a community-wide education program to put out here to let people know what kind of qualities they should be looking for in a candidate. When we got the appointed board, and I, I make no secret about this, even though the unions do support an all-elected board, the appointed board was actually the best board we had. And I believe the reason was because you had people on there who had actual qualifications. Because anybody can run for a board seat. You know, you've had people who ran just because they didn't like the way some teacher spoke to their child in class. But you, the appointed board, you had people who either had, either had education background, business background, finance, they had some kind of qualifications. So, you know, as far as working with the superintendent, you know, they worked very well with the superintendent. Um, you probably know when we had one board and superintendent that got into it, that ended up with lawsuits and all kinds of mess. So we looked back through the years and I will say for myself, you know, this is my thirtieth year in this job. I've worked with countless board members with eleven superintendents. Um, you know, so I've seen how they work and not all of them work well together. So you do need to have, um, a clear definition of the role. And this is why we were saying that the role of the chair needs to be codified. It's defined what the, the superintendent's, uh, position, what their duties and responsibilities are, but there's nothing there from the chair. So that needs to be clear what the chair actually, what the power of the party of the chair is. Um, and especially, you know, if you have a board where there's a lot of confusion or you get a majority that just, you know, will not work well with the rest of the board or will not work well with the CEO or superintendent. The chair should have some kind of authority that they can, uh, make decisions that'll keep things moving along. So that was one of the things we were looking at with the chair. But we, we did conclude that, you know, going back to an all-elected board would be the best way to do it. What, what we did not want to do was just say, okay, let's everybody say, we'll go to the elected board because that's what most people are asking for, but not put anything in place that's going to change. Because obviously elected boards, some of them did not work over time, or you wouldn't have had appointed board, you wouldn't be with a hybrid board right now. So I think, you know, it's going to take a lot of looking at what qualifications. Again, educating the public as to what they're looking for, because a lot of the people, they have no idea what the role of board of education members are. You know, they, they think they're just there for their beck and call. They don't understand the relationship of the board to the CEO superintendent. And by the way, I hate that title, CEO. I think it should be a superintendent because it's very clear what the qualifications are for a superintendent. The CEO position actually was created because you had an individual who did not meet all the qualifications of a superintendent. So that they did not have to get a waiver from the state. They started calling the position a CEO. I just don't like it. That's only Doris speaking. But, um, like I said, we, we really did spend a lot of time looking at all of the different, um, people that had been here, the different ways, the positions that interacted. When, um, David was talking earlier about, um, the, the hiring of people. You know, you have the board who has their staff. You have the CEO who has over everyone else. And even at that, there had been changes because the board staff at one point in time were all under the superintendent. And over time, boards had made decisions that they wanted, like internal audit, they wanted to make them confidential and report to the board. They wanted to make their staff confidential and report to the board. But it's up to the board for any positions in the system. Which positions are assigned to which unit? Okay, that is the board's authority. Um, so anyway, I, there's a lot of it, but that's just some of the things I wanted to share with.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Reed. Thank you. Um, Dr. Smith and then Dr. Christie.
Um, wonderful, a lot of stuff to think about. Now, um, what, I'm glad that you clarified that, Ms. Doris, uh, or is it Ms. Dolores? Um, just, I'm looking at the screen and I don't.
It's just Doris.
The Doris. Thank you, Ms. Doris. Um, I, um, um, you, you mentioned something that I did not know and I'm trying to um, formulate my question. And we talked about this, uh, uh, the, the nomination committee, like a, a vetting committee. And would, have you ever experienced that in the past? If, and that is to get the qualifications? Because I'm afraid that we won't get qualified, uh, board members within all elected board. So is there any way that, that some assistance can be provided there? And you said that we could not do the qualification. That's what threw me off was that, that we cannot put qualification, like we cannot say board member cannot have college degree, board member cannot have
Right.
certification. It's true. I should not know that. Okay.
Right.
Now, so then can we have a nomination committee?
Well, let me, Doris, if I can, jump in on, on that. And, and, um, I wa- I want to mention this gingerly, right? Uh, where I think the task is, to, to get to your point, Dr. Smith. And I, I say this as a former state senator. I think that what we have to begin to do is look at our structure of elections that, um, allow for then, at, at, there was some point, I don't know if it still is now, but the state senators really ruled the ticket. And so how people got a school board many, with, with many instances was to appeal to the state senator. And the state senator then allowed for the person to be put on the ticket. And then basically people just voted down the line of the ticket, right? And so the school board member, many cases were beholden to the state senator because that's how they get reelected or what have you. I think the question, and, and that's, that's, that's what I think, you know, um, that, that's where I think with Dr. Thornton's wise counsel came from. And that is, how do we have the public to zero in on the school board person themselves? So that, um, um, the community can state the kind of qualifications of what we think would make a proper school board member. And then to, uh, at community meetings or what have you, at forums, um, really cajole the, the candidates to sort of speak to those qualifications. Now, can we codify that? Can we say that you have to have a degree, that you have to have management experience and all that kind of stuff? We would advise that, um, that we could not. But certainly I think that, um, to the extent that the NAACP and other groups begin to lift up, um, forums and other things and make statements around what we think make a strong school board members. We hope that that would influence the election in a way that you, you would get qualified people. But, but also keep in mind that, look, in any election, you're going to let some people that just, you know, I mean, uh, you know, you, that, that could happen, that could happen anyplace. And so, um, it's the community that has to take on, that making sure that we bring the, the people, the right people to, to the fold. Uh, because it was very embarrassing, Doris knows very well, and I was involved with that. When we had elected school board, we went to then all-appointed. You're talking about a battle. Um, there were long nights around that. That was very embarrassing for us. Um, and, um, we certainly don't want to go through that again. And I think the best way to do that is to get the community heavily engaged. But that's my view and certainly look forward to other people's point of view.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, Mr. Harrington, Ms. Reed, otherwise known as Doris. Hi, Dr. Christie.
Oh, the venerable one. That's what you call Doris, the venerable.
Hello, thank you. I just wanted to, uh, add to the conversation about, um, you know, having expertise for the board, um, when maybe the board is lacking. And we had actually discussed, so I was happy to see the recommendation from the other committee of the advisory councils and beefing up the expertise of the school board, the elected school board by having expertise within the advisory councils that are advising the board on different areas of policy so that, yes, they're elected and maybe, you know, you know, different ones are going to come with different credentials and different understandings and different perspectives. But if we have advisory councils that have, um, people who are experts in different areas of education policy, um, then it creates, you know, a stronger school board by having trusted, um, professionals and experts advising the school board.
I think that's an excellent point. Um, uh, that's a really good point. I know other boards that, I know many of us on and, um, have had like advisory group, they, they don't have the time to be in a disposition to be on the board itself, but they come with a level of expertise to provide advice to both the CEO and, and to the board on very weighted, weighted matters. So I think that's, I think that, thank you, Dr. Christie for raising that. I think.
And I just want to add, because it would also then be able to bring voice. So, for example, our educators can't run to be on the school board without, they'd have to resign their jobs. But through advisory councils, you could actually have educators on the advisory council or saying, you know what? This was what that would look like in the actual classroom and actually giving the perspective of what it would look like implementing maybe something at the school level, at the ground. maybe something at the school level, at the ground level, at the student level, and being able to have a parent voice on that advisory council, have a business voice on that advisory council, have those different voices on the advisory council to really bring that um, discussion forward, you know, on the backside. And I'll yield now.
Thank you, Dr. Christie. Uh, we have a line, a small line, Dr. Smith and then uh, Ms. Jacobs.
All right, um, and um, I know on, on, I think on the recommendation number three, diversity, or maybe diversity was mentioned. Um, did the committee talk a little bit about what that means? Uh, diversity is a very big, broad word. So I, I know that we, we said it, it was on recommendation three, and I, if you could elaborate, anyone could elaborate that on a little bit more. And then my second question is, and then I hopefully won't have any more questions, and that is in terms of the, the finance part. I'm wondering if this group talked about the um, finance part in terms of the election and the cost, and um, the folks running and how that plays a part. I know we've heard uh, some wonderful conversations about uh, you know, finance and, and, and running, that it takes uh, way, way more money to run than, than, than uh, than the, than what you're gonna get paid for, for doing the job. Um, obviously is uh, more so from the heart, but I'm, I'm just wondering how, if, if you talked about that.
Yeah. Dr. Christie, I'm gonna yield to you, because you, 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 you uh, no, and I'll say, I, I thought you raised some really good points to committee about, you know, because we talked about running at large and the chair running, or what have you, and Dr. Christie, I thought raised some
Right, yeah, we did discuss that, that, you know, for the relatively low pay of a school board member, for example, you know, we, because we discussed back and forth at length, whether or not the elected member should be by district or at large, and as expensive as it would be to run it at a, a district level campaign, it's a hundred times full what you would have to pay to run effort to be an at-large seat. And so what you would end up with is a very elitist school board of only people who could one, afford to work for free, basically, on a school board, plus people who can afford to expense, spend an exorbitant amount of money running for that office, and you would really disenfranchise um, lower-income individuals from being able to be represented on the school board.
Yeah. The, the, to the point of public financing, I mean, I think that's a, that's an interesting, but we did not explore that, and perhaps, you know, we will, you'll take that up. Um, I, I don't know how you do that, public finance, separate from then public financing for other positions, you know, because remember now, the school board is a state. Um, really is a state position. Um, so I don't know if counties can, can do that. I, I think that there'd be some questions. I, I, I certainly would like to entertain that. But um, I think there'd be some technical information that we would need to have in order then to figure out then whether or not that would fit into our, you know, the culture of our elections, if you will. So, to get at that, to get at the earlier question. But I think it's a, it's an interesting point. That gets exactly what Dr. Christie's talking about. And that is that we want as broad a participation as possible. To the um, to the diversity piece, I mean, I think that, you know, um, you know, I was chair of the redistricting, uh, that redistricting commi- commission that was so controversial, but um, I think that how we set up the districts will help then determine, you know, hopefully we'll bring in diversity, you know, racial diversity. Um, in terms of uh, skill diversity, uh, like, you know, people from the business community or what have you, again. I mean, I think that that's gonna have to depend upon what we look at as a community that, that we think best represents. But I like Dr. Christie's earlier point about the advisory. I think that that's where we could really get, you know, um, in terms of diversity of skill on the advisory, on the advisory board, uh, for people then to be able to feel like today they're participating on the board without having to go through the elective process.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Ms. Jacobs, you had your hand up earlier, but you put it down. Do you still want to comment or ask a question?
I'm good, thanks.
Sure. Are there any other comments or questions? We are approaching our time, so
Mr. Chairman, if I can, so just for clarification purpose for the subcommittee, uh, it sounds like from the task force, you're encouraging us to perhaps look more deeply into the finance and, and the diversity question. Um, and then we did talk about, and I failed, and, and Doris, you may want to take maybe thirty seconds on this. Um, uh, the, the, the most venerable one, um, to make, take thirty seconds on this, around you're looking at, because I think, uh, Dr. Smith, your, your, your group might have mentioned this, around um, staggered terms on the board, and I think we talked about that a little bit as well. Um, uh, so I was glad to see Dr. Smith's group take that up, and we, we talked about that a little bit as well as the overlap, which certainly um, um, you know, was, was sort of intuitive to our recommendations. So I don't know, Doris wants to speak to that anymore, but Mr. Chairman
Well, I'll just say very quickly, we did discuss it. Um, it's in place now that you have staggered terms. And we said that, uh, that, that needs to stay in place. Because you don't want to have a whole new board just for continuity's sake. You need to have that staggered, uh, the staggered elections.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Harrington and Ms. Reed and Doris. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any, anything else good for the good of the order?
Um, I have one more comment in, in general, and I think, uh, Mr. Harrington, you talked a little bit about this, and um, I'm, I'm always afraid that when we have an opportunity to make radical change like, like this and have a task force where we can provide some recommendations, I'm always afraid to, to leave a opportunity uh, that can be created here and, and, and just um, have it be the responsibility of others. And, and I'm, I'm concerned if, and I'm thinking out loud, that's why my, my words are a little uh, muddy. And that is, you mentioned public buy-in and educating the public. Is there any room or opportunity here or within the board that we can add to that could enhance the buy-in or educating the public? So that, that would be part of a, of a responsibility of a board. So in turn, in turn, the, the folks that want to work on the board will be educating the community about the things that they're, they're actually doing. Um, because I just, I don't want to leave that hanging, that it's just election and people not know what's going on. And I know that other folks, you, you mentioned other folks, like senators.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I, I think, uh, Dr. Smith and if it's all right with the subcommittee, I, I invite subcommittee members to push back. Perhaps in our future meetings, we could talk about strategies to educate the public and come back to the task force. Um, if that's all right with you, Mr. Chair, and I look to my, to the subcommittee members.
Absolutely.
I don't mind taking that on, but I, I, I wanna, there's so many occasions where I do speak out of turn, and I want to make sure that I'm speaking in concert with the subcommittee, but, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind taking that on, Mr. Chairman. Of um, you know, just talking about some strategies of, of, you know, public education and, and allow for uh, that, that we could put forth as part of, part of the, I think Dr. Smith's raising a good point. You don't want to leave that so just hanging, but, but I don't mind, I don't mind in future meetings or having a timetable where we take that on and express that to the committee, to open it up for the committee for its insights as well, and making that as part of our uh, sort of, you know, what I would call civic uh, uh, recommendation.
I appreciate it.
Other, other people in the subcommittee could say, Harrington, you're crazy. But um, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't mind, you know, having that conversation, at least on, on, on our subcommittee.
I think within your subcommittee, they can tell you that, and then you guys can decide within, within their, you know, if, if, you know, to what extent you want to pick it up, as you might say. Ms. Jacobs.
I just, you know, I've been off the board since two thousand sixteen. I still get newsletters and emails from board members to this day. So I, I think there's two things going on. I think there's um, I think citizens don't know what's happening on the school board, because maybe they don't have children in the school system, so it may not be forefront on their mind. Um, although our tax dollars, um, a large portion of it go to the school district. And so I think, I think it's more than just the board educating the public. There's a responsibility the public has as well. And as I've seen over the years, um, people show up at the polls, to your point, Senator, with their little ballot, um, and they don't even know that, they don't know who their school board member is. They don't know that there's a school board election. Um, there's a school board election in this country every month of the year. And I, so I think is, I, I certainly agree that there has to be strategies to, to better educate the public. Um, but it's not just the senators with the ballots. Um, you know, I had support of the unions too. So there's so much to be talked about, and we're talking about, um, and I spent fifty thousand dollars of my own money with that support. So I think there has to be a different level of conversation, because when I talk to um, citizens and residents who are super voters, who don't even understand some of these issues, um, there's a, there's a personal level of accountability too. And so I think the question has to be, what are the strategies we need to educate or to, to keep people informed? But the other side of that strategy is, what must I do as a person who lives in this county, who cares about education? Who is fed up with the next Washington Post article about education? Um, what can I do? Everybody's not gonna run for the school board, but I really, it's frustrating when um, someone calls me, and as much as I know they might love me and say, I don't know, who should I vote for? Who's running for office? And I push back and say, I need you to do some homework, and then come back and let's have a discussion about what you like and what I don't like, or all those kinds of things. I don't mean to get on a soapbox about it. Um, but you know, the things that I've heard is, school board is lowest on the totem pole, nobody really cares about it unless it affects them. Um, but when we talk about, you know, we talk about, you know, do we get casino money? I mean, there's so many conversations that's going on in the public that people just don't understand how it works. And when sixty percent of um, tax dollars, give or take, is going to public education, you need to care about it. And, and whether you have children in the school system or not. So I would hope that strategy is, is, we use accountability also in that conversation as well, because far too many people are thinking that they've done their civic duty by going to vote, but then there's no accountability afterwards.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Thank you. Ms. Reed, were you going to say something and we potentially cut you off? Okay, just checking. Any other comments or questions? I appreciate this robust discussion, and uh, not just the discussion itself, but the work behind the scenes to, to get us here. Uh, I was thinking as you were presenting out, all of you, and responding and engaging, that uh, we started uh, trying to figure out how in the world are we going to make recommendations, and here we are today having some potential um, possible uh, uh, recommendations to consider as we are further on uh, this journey. I want to make sure that I publicly announce, make sure that we are reaffirmed here in our group, but also to the public that the task force recommendations uh, would require state legislation. So there's time for additional input by the community, as well as while we are in task force session, if you will. Uh, and, and so after the task force finishes its work, um, this legislation body has to, you know, we recommend only provide recommendations, and they have to make a determination of what they're gonna do with their recommendation. Right? But, and, but we're here to as best of our ability to provide a recommendation that's informed and informed based on best practices, best practices on what's actually happening and applied, as well as um, historical and even research. So thank you. I'd like to finish up and turn it back over to uh, John or Erica, but I'd like to thank um, openly Patrick Geller, Eric, Erica Wilson, Ron Young, and of course, John Erzen. I want to mention you guys explicitly, in, individually and together for providing, providing such the human resource to bring us here. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Coleman, and, and thank you again to this group. Uh, you know, I, I, it was a pleasure listening to uh, this discussion tonight. I, I had an opportunity to, to look at the preliminary uh, recommendations and uh, earlier today and, and read them, but this, this was a very good conversation. I certainly hope uh, that, that those uh, in the public who were listening tonight, uh, found it as uh, you know, both interesting and, and inform, and informative as I did. Uh, I want to thank you guys for uh, all of the work that you've put in uh, thus far. Uh, and certainly as Dr. Coleman said, you know, thank you to Erica, Patrick and, and Ron, uh, as they've helped facilitate the, the subcommittee work. Uh, so we will uh, have our second public listening session uh, next Wednesday night. We'll, we'll start a little bit earlier at six. Uh, as I said, we're gonna continue to push it out through all of our channels. We ask that, that you guys continue to send it out to your list as a reminder. Uh, we'd really like to get those numbers up a little bit higher. I think there was, uh, you know, certainly talk tonight about uh, you know, public education and public buy-in, uh, and so I, I think it's very important that we hear from the public again. And I hope that uh, you know, the, the residents having an opportunity to, to hear uh, some of these preliminary recommendations, uh, that that will get them thinking a little bit more, uh, and, and ready to come with, with some additional comments and questions. Uh, so after, we will, uh, we'll send that information out for the, the, the Zoom link uh, for the listening session for the task force members. Uh, we'll get that out to you early next week like we usually do. Uh, and we look forward to seeing everybody next Wednesday night, and uh, we'll also talk at that time, uh, after that session is done uh, as to what the next steps will be, uh, as we go over the, the final couple of weeks of uh, the task force and, and getting recommendations finalized, so we can bring them back uh, for a meeting where there will be a vote uh, on each recommendation. Uh, so that's something uh, to consider as well. One of the things we'll also do, I know that um, uh, a couple of the groups uh, shared their recommendations uh, tonight. I think I have a, a document for all three groups, so we will send that around, so everybody can take it, uh, can read uh, where everything is at right now, just to make sure that uh, you're, you're up to speed on all the recommendations that were presented tonight, and, and have that uh, in the forefront of your mind as, as we go into next week. Uh, so with that, um, Erica, if there's not uh, anything else, I think I, I covered the logistics of it all. Uh, okay, all right. So thank you, everyone. Uh, have a good evening, have a good rest of your week. We'll be sending that information around, and, and we look forward to seeing everybody in the public listening session next Wednesday.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.